Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 14th, 2025 meeting of the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners. Before we begin, I'd like to make a note that the Board of Commissioners met an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss legal-related matters. We'll begin the meeting with a roll call. Our township manager, Dave Berman, now please take the role. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondek.
Present.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb.
Here.
Commissioner Cavender.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner McCollum.
Here.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
Thank you. Now I ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our Police Chief, John Biola.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America.
Thank you. We now move on to Agenda Item Number Two to have a special ceremonial check presentation for Connecting Greenways and Trails Grant Award from the Friends of Haverford Trails and the Haverford Township Civic Council. Now I'd like to invite our friends, Mr. Peter Villaniesi and Mr. Tim Walsh, to please join us at the podium to share more.
Hello. We are very pleased to support Haverford Township's efforts to complete the Darby Creek Trail from the school bus yard all the way down to McDonald Field by providing this $30,000 Connecting Greenways and Trails Grant. For those of you who don't know us, we are, since 2011, part of the Haverford Township Civic Council, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And since we began in 2011, we've had a great relationship with Haverford's Parks and Recreation Department. Shout out to the former director, current director as well, former director Tim Denny, who taught us well that we should, with regard to trails, do what we can, whenever we can. And we followed that advice for all these years, building trails and helping to get trails built. Our mission is to enhance the quality of life in our township through improved walking, running, and biking in our community's greenways, additional bike parking, promote bike ped safety on roads and sidewalks. We've built trails. We've purchased bike racks, including for the township in Septa. We've helped run valet parking at public events. Anyway, that's a little bit about us. We are really fortunate to have a great partner in the township and Parks and Rec. We collectively launched the Western Phillies Suburbs Trail Summit. We've been hosting it for over 10 years at the crack. And we would like to keep going. We'd encourage people to join our effort. And we are proud that we've initiated a bike safety campaign at recreation's encouragement due to bike ped conflicts on the trails. We have bike bells for safety. We look forward to possibly collaborating on bike helmets as well. So with that, I just want to introduce Tim Walsh, who's helped all these many years.
Yes, I as well want to thank Haverford Township for its continued support of developing trails and especially the maintenance of trails. That, as you probably will know, that it's one thing to build the trails. It's another thing to keep them accessible and available to folks. Second, though, is also to highlight that while most of our focus up until now has been in the development of trails within Haverford Township, that in the recent years, we have become far more concerned about bike safety. And so that is why, especially the past few years, and then, as Peter had outlined, the Bicycle Bell Program, helmets, we're constantly pursuing more bike racks. That if you've ever been over at the middle school on a weekday, it probably could have three times more bike racks and still not have enough bike racks for all the folks. And now with e-bikes coming into vogue, that it is very important. So we appreciate what you folks have done, and we hope to continue our relationship with you for many more years. Thank you.
Thank you. So before we take some photos with the check, I want to just take a moment myself to express my sincere gratitude on behalf of Haverford Township, to the Friends of Haverford Trails, and of course, the Haverford Township Civic Council for this generous grant award. We're incredibly grateful to accept this award, and I'm pleased to confirm that the funds will go directly towards constructing the connection of the Darby Creek Trail between Glendale Park and McDonald Field. You know, I'll just say that we share your belief in this tremendous value of this project, not just for our township, but for the broader region as well. Completing this connection will give residents and visitors more opportunities to walk, run, and bike while strengthening our growing network of greenways and trail connections that help improve the quality of life for everyone. I also want to just say how much we appreciate your dedication and longstanding support for trail development and stewardship, your leadership from hosting the annual trail summit that you mentioned to consistently advocating for trail expansion throughout our region has played a major role in helping projects like this move forward. So we're truly excited to continue working together with you and are just incredibly grateful. So again, I will open up the floor in case anybody else wants to say anything. And if not, let's...
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Then let's walk around, take some pictures, and then we'll come back. Thank you.
Laura, this is going around, right?
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much.
They did that already.
Oh, thank you. So we'll now move on to Agenda Item Number Three to hear a reading of four proclamations this evening, beginning with a presentation of a proclamation presented by Commissioner Cavender at the podium. Commissioner Cavender, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm joined by Commissioner Holmes, who's going to be reading our second proclamation. So tonight, we have two proclamations. They're both rooted in inclusion and acceptance. One is recognizing October as Augmentative and Alternative Communication Awareness Month, and another recognizing October as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. I'd like to thank the Haverford Township Human Relations Commission for their work to recognize the communities impacted by these proclamations. Human Relations Commissions in Pennsylvania, like ours, help make communities more fair and inclusive by addressing discrimination close to home. Our commission was established in Haverford by ordinance by the Board of Commissioners in 2011 and is made up of volunteers from across the township. HRCs provide education and outreach on diversity and inclusion, assist residents who believe they've experienced discrimination, and connect them with the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission. By fostering understanding and offering local support, their work helps ensure equal opportunity in housing, employment, and public life for all residents. So I'd like to thank our commission for their work on this. Along those lines, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Township Building on October 23rd. The evening of October 23rd, we'll be holding an event with the Executive Director of the Pennsylvania HRC, Chad Dion Lassiter. We'll put out more information, but he will speak on the role of these organizations and answer questions from those in attendance. And all are welcome. So I am going to start with the proclamation recognizing October as Augmentative and Alternative Communication Awareness Month in the township of Haverford. Whereas communication is a foundational human right, and all members of our community deserve full opportunity to express themselves, to connect, and to participate. And whereas Augmentative and Alternative Communication, or AAC, encompasses tools, methods, and strategies ranging from low-tech picture boards and symbol cards to high-tech speech-generating devices that support individuals who have difficulty using verbal speech. And whereas many residents of Haverford Township of all ages benefit from AAC to access education, social interaction, healthcare, employment, and civic life. And whereas increasing awareness of AAC improves people's lives by promoting understanding, reducing stigma, and encouraging investment in technology, training, and supportive environments that enable everyone to be heard. Whereas October is recognized nationally as AAC Awareness Month, a time to uplift voices, share resources, and honor the individuals, families, educators, and advocates who advance communication access. Whereas Haverford Township is committed to fostering accessibility, equity, self-expression, and participation for all of its residents. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford in public session duly assembled that the month of October is hereby proclaimed as Augmentative and Alternative Communication, AAC Awareness Month, in the Township of Haverford. So tonight, I'm honored to welcome Havertown residents, Gregory Tino and his mother Linda, to share in this proclamation. Gregory is non-speaking and autistic. He has a praxia, and he communicates using a letterboard. And through that, he's become a gifted writer and poet. And he has a few words to say that he's put together that his mom will help share. And then we will be sharing one of his poems that's been recorded on YouTube and airing it on the screen. So come on up, Linda and Gregory.
So my son has an app that has recorded his voice, and he can type, and it will read out what he says. And this is what he wrote about today.
Thank you for recognizing October as AAC Awareness Month. I didn't have a way to communicate for 24 years of my life. Today, I am the author of six books. I have a blog and a YouTube channel. Communication gives people like myself a better, more purposeful life. Today, AAC is saving the lives of many silent people who have so much to say. Thank you for bringing awareness to that.
Okay. Now, we are going to share this poem written by Gregory that is about Havertown.
Havertown, home of my birth. Favorite place on planet Earth. A town of people, kind and true. I am one of a lucky, chosen few who grew up in a happy place. I feel its loving, warm embrace. From Luigi's Barber Shop, who cut my hair, to Giant, where I work without a care, with people who always watch my back. It is a town that doesn't lack. I love the burgers at Havertown Grill and sledding at Linwood during winter's chill and beautiful walks at Merry Place, paddock swings up into space, my neighborhood block parties, and fireworks. Living here sure has its perks. Havertown, I do believe. I will always stay and never leave. A slice of Americana with a big old heart. A home you will never want to part.
Thank you so much. So I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Holmes to read our second proclamation.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavender. Proclamation recognizing October as National Disability Employment Awareness Month in the Township of Haverford. Whereas the Township of Haverford celebrates the talents, skills, and contributions of individuals with disabilities and recognizes the importance of an inclusive workforce that reflects the diversity of our community. Whereas National Disability Employment Awareness Month was first declared by Congress in 1945 to raise awareness about disability employment issues and to honor the many contributions of America's workers with disabilities. And whereas the 2025 national theme, Advancing Access and Equity, underscores the importance of ensuring that people with disabilities have equal opportunity to prepare for, to obtain, and to thrive in meaningful employment. And whereas barriers to employment, including misconceptions, inaccessible workplaces, and insufficient accommodations can prevent individuals with disabilities from fully participating in the workforce. And whereas, when communities work together to remove barriers, to expand resources, and to promote inclusive practices, everyone benefits from a more dynamic, innovative, and resilient economy. And whereas Haverford Township affirms its commitment to equity, accessibility, and inclusion, and its promise to create opportunities where all residents can achieve their fullest potential. And whereas the Haverford Township Human Relations Commission works year-round to promote equal opportunity and to eliminate discrimination in employment, housing, and public accommodations, and serves as a resource for residents and employers seeking to foster more inclusive workplaces. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford in public session duly assembled that the month of October is hereby proclaimed National Disability Employment Awareness Month in the Township of Haverford. The Board calls upon all residents, businesses, civic organizations, and municipal departments to promote awareness of equitable employment opportunities for people with disabilities, to provide accessible spaces and inclusive hiring practices among workplaces in the township, to support policies, training, and outreach that advance workplace diversity and accessibility, to recognize the achievements of workers with disabilities who strengthen our local economy and enrich our community, and to foster a township culture that values every person's contributions and ensures that no one is excluded because of disability. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be entered into the official minutes of the Board of Commissioners and shared through Township Communications, proclaimed this 14th day of October 2025 by the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will now hear a reading of our next proclamation, a proclamation recognizing the 100th anniversary of the Manoa Fire Company. Commissioner Gondek, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Whereas the Manoa Fire Company, established in 1925 as the Eagle Precinct Fire Association, has proudly served the residents of Haverford Township for a century, providing fire suppression, rescue operations, and emergency medical services to more than 50,000 residents across 10 square miles. And whereas, the Manoa Fire Company is one of five volunteer fire stations in the township, and its dedicated firefighting staff is 100% volunteer, staffing an engine, a rescue, and a rescue pumper 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, ensuring the safety and well-being of the community. And whereas, throughout its long and storied history, the Manoa Fire Company has demonstrated innovation, resourcefulness, and commitment from the purchase of its first Persh Dodge combination hose and chemical truck in 1926 to constructing a fire engine on a Dodge chassis during World War II to pioneering local emergency medical services with the acquisition of a Studebaker ambulance in 1945. And whereas, the Manoa Fire Company has continually modernized its facilities and equipment, including a major firehouse renovation in 1999 to 2000, the purchase of modern apparatus like the Pierce mini-pumper in 1990, and the ongoing maintenance of advanced engines and rescue pumpers to meet contemporary needs. And whereas, the company has developed specialized capabilities, including SWIFT Water Rescue Team certified to Type 2A standards, trained to respond to water-related emergencies. And whereas, the ladies auxiliary of the Manoa Fire Company has provided unwavering support through community engagement and fundraising efforts, including the annual Bingo Night fundraiser, fostering strong community bonds while enhancing the company's operational effectiveness. And whereas, the Manoa Fire Company is far more than its vital lifesaving and fire rescue mission. It has become an integral part of the Haverford Township community, well-known for traditions such as driving Santa through the neighborhood streets to spread holiday cheer and for its dedicated presence at callous community events throughout the year. And whereas, on December 25th, 1965, EMS Captain Edward Walsh made the ultimate sacrifice in service to our community. While serving on duty with our ambulance, Captain Walsh suffered a massive heart attack inside Haverford Hospital. We honor and remember Captain Walsh, his service, and his sacrifice. And whereas, the Manoa Fire Company exemplifies dedication, courage, and a deep commitment to community service, honoring its longstanding traditions while embracing innovation, the company continually adopts modern advancements in fire and rescue operations to serve the community with skill, efficiency, and care. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township hereby honors the Manoa Fire Company on the occasion of its 100th anniversary, recognizing its century-long commitment to protecting lives, property, and the community, and expressing profound gratitude for the volunteers and members whose service has endured the safety and resilience of Haverford Township, proclaimed this 14th day of October 2025.
Thank you. And for our final proclamation this evening, I invite Commissioner Jerry Hart to read a proclamation recognizing the township's ties to the Haverford West County AFC. Commissioner Hart, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Whereas Haverford Township in Delaware County, Pennsylvania, traces its earliest roots to the late 17th century when Welsh Quakers, encouraged by William Penn, settled in this region in search of religious freedom and opportunity, bringing with them traditions, language, and place names that endure to this day. And whereas, the town of Haverford, established as part of the Welsh barony in 1662, derives its name from Haverford West in Pembrokeshire, Wales. And many early families, including the David, Ellis, Hayes, Howell, Humphreys, Jenkins, Lawrence, Llewellyn, Morgan, Painter, Richard, Reeves, and Sharpes families, established lasting traditions, lasting institutions, such as the Haverford Friends Meeting and other landmarks that still serve as reminders of our Welsh beginnings. And whereas, connections between Haverford Township and Haverford West highlight the enduring legacy of the Welsh influence on our town's identity and celebrate the ways history and culture continue to unite us across oceans and centuries. And whereas, ties of history are matched by ties of spirit. Most recently, through the game of soccer with Haverford West County AFC in Wales and the Haverford Soccer Club in Pennsylvania, sharing not only a passion for the sport, but also an emblematic connection through symbols, heritage, and the next generation of young athletes who strengthen bonds across the Atlantic. And whereas, Haverford Township is proud to have recently established a relationship with Haverford West County AFC, fostering opportunities for collaboration and cultural exchange. And whereas, this partnership represents a living continuation of our shared heritage, reinforcing the values of friendship, teamwork, and cross-cultural understanding that define both communities. And now, therefore, be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township in Delaware County, Pennsylvania, thus hereby recognize and honor the historic and cultural connection between Haverford Township and Haverford West, Wales. And be it further resolved that we extend our warmest well wishes to the Haverford West County AFC, express our enthusiasm for future collaboration and exchange with our Welsh counterparts, and look forward to deepening this transatlantic friendship for generations to come, proclaimed this 14th day of October 2025.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. All right. We're now moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, our Citizens Forum. We'll begin the Citizens Forum. We'll begin the citizens' forum by giving each speaker approximately three minutes to share their remarks. We'll begin with individuals who signed up in advance. During this portion, we also welcome comments on agenda items. If you wish to speak about a matter that is not on tonight's agenda, you'll have the opportunity to do so during the second citizens' forum later in the meeting. Commissioners will have the opportunity to respond to any matters raised after all speakers have been heard. With that, we have no registered speakers this evening, so I will open up the floor for anybody who wishes to speak on an agenda item this evening. Anybody on the left-hand side? Left-hand side? Seeing none on the right-hand side? Agenda item? All right, very good. Then we will move on to agenda item number five, the Bureau of Fire update. Commissioner Gondak, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The Haverford Township Bureau of Fire report for September of 2025, total incidents of 73, 59 were township incidents, 14 out-of-t township mutual aid incidents. Average personnel per call was 17. We had 541 personnel hours committed to incidents and 600 personnel hours committed to training. The Haverford Township Bureau of Fire provided mutual aid to three working fires within Delaware County and one working fire in Montgomery County. The Bureau of Fire provided mutual aid on a major fuel spill from an overturned fuel truck on the media bypass in Upper Providence on 9/22. A total of 17 members from Brooklyn Line and Manoa Fire Companies were on the scene for two hours. With regards to our ambulances, there were a total of 443 dispatches in the month of September, resulting in patient charts for 368 patient charts, including 213 transportations. We had out-of-town coverage 102 times and coverage came into our township 22 times. That is the report.
Thank you. I needed that concluding remark. Thank you so much. Any questions or comments related to the report? Hearing none, then we'll move on to the Township Auditor update. At this time, I invite our Township Auditor, Mr. Ross Anderson, to share his monthly report. Mr. Anderson, the floor is yours.
Hear me?
No, we can't.
Oh, sorry, guys. Everybody who's listening on YouTube is missing out, but I'm not going to review myself. I reviewed the warrants and expenditures for these meetings. I found no irregularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Anderson? Hey, hearing none. I'd like to invite our Township Manager, Dave Berman, to provide his update for the month. Mr. Berman, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to give a quick update on the zoning ordinance rewrite. It's something we've never really done before. We're modernizing our zoning ordinance to make it clearer and more consistent and easier to use, and we're going to keep things that make Haverford Township special, strong neighborhoods, vibrant commercial corridors, walkability, sustainability, fair, and predictable processes here in the office. So, we have a steering committee made up of commissioners, staff, and community representatives, and they're guiding the effort with support from our consultant. Initially, we're going to work on reformatting and basic updates, cleaning up definitions, adding illustrations and tables, and reorganizing the document so it's consistent and user-friendly. That work is going to set the foundation for substantive changes where we'll take a deeper look at zoning standards, things like uses, density, parking, and signage. Public involvement is going to be a key part of the process, and our new website, haverfordzoning.com, has already had over 800 views since we launched it just last week. So we want you to visit that site. Again, it's haverfordzoning.com where you'll find plain language explanations, upcoming events, and ways to get involved throughout the process. Next up are the Zoning 101 sessions. They're scheduled for Wednesday, October 29, here at the Township Building. That's at 6:30 PM. And another one, the same presentation, will be on Wednesday, November 5, at 6:30 PM at the Creck. And so I need a favor. I'd like to ask everyone to please come to a session if you can, visit the website, but most importantly, tell your neighbors about it. The more voices we hear now, the better this ordinance is going to work for future generations. And so again, haverfordzoning.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Berman? Hearing none, we move on to agenda item number eight, the approval of warrants. I'll now entertain a motion.
Madam President.
Commissioner Holmes.
I move we approve warrant number 10 of 2025 totaling $7,868,106.60, comprising the general sewer fund payroll for September 11, 2025, in the amount of $837,203.28. General sewer fund payroll for September 25, 2025, in the amount of $843,765.33. General sewer fund payroll for October 9, 2025, in the amount of $801,734.62. General fund disbursements in the amount of $3,950,292.21. Sewer fund disbursements in the amount of $663,909.27. Community development block grant fund disbursement in the amount of $55,040.20. Capital projects fund disbursements in the amount of $594,310.22. American Rescue Plan fund disbursements in the amount of $108,960.79. A credit card statement ending August 27, 2025, in the amount of $12,890.58.
Heard a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Heard a motion as second. The motion's now open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on the board? Hearing none, Mr. Berman, please take the roll.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Groth.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We now move on to consider the approval of the items on the consent agenda. Please note that all items are detailed in the public packet. At this time, I'd like to ask my colleagues if anyone wishes to remove any items from the consent agenda for individual consideration later in the meeting. Hearing no requests, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the items A to E of the consent agenda as far further detailed in the public packet.
Second.
Heard a motion as second. The motion's now open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on the board? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman, please take the roll.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Groth.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Board will now move on to ordinances, and we'll consider three ordinances this evening, beginning with the second reading of P. 11-2025. I'll now entertain a motion.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner McCollum.
Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P. 11-2025, further amending and supplementing ordinance number 1960 adopted June 30, 1986, and known as General Laws of the Township of Haverford, Chapter 175, Vehicles and Traffic, establishing limited two-hour parking on Pilgrim Lane.
Second.
Heard a motion as second. The motion's now open for discussion. Just a point of clarification, this is actually a second reading. And with that said, any further questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Berman, please take the roll.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Groth.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We will, the board will now consider P. 12-2025 a traffic ordinance. This is a first reading. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes.
Madam President, I move we adopt the first reading of ordinance number P. 12 of 2025, further amending and supplementing ordinance number 1960, adopted June 30, 19, I'm sorry, 1986, and known as the General Laws of the Township of Haverford, Chapter 175, Vehicles and Traffic, removing special purpose parking in front of 2939 Berkeley Road.
Second.
Thank you. I've heard a motion as second. The motion's now open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on the board? Hearing none, I'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman, please take the roll.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Groth.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. The board will now consider P. 13-2025 a traffic ordinance. This is a first reading. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Forstie-Groth.
To make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P. 13-2025, further amending and supplementing ordinance number 1960, adopted June 30, 1986, and known as General Laws of Haverford Township, uh, General Laws of the Township of Haverford, Chapter 175, Vehicles and Traffic, adding a handicap parking place space in front of 336 Darby Road.
I've heard a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We've heard a motion as second. The motion's now open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on the board? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Groth.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We now move on to agenda item number 11, a conditional use approval for property at 380 Highland Lane. Please note that this is a conditional use application, this conditional use application was subject of a public hearing held on October 6, 2025 at 6:00 PM. I'll now entertain a motion.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve a conditional use variance for St. John Newman Roman Catholic Church, owner of 380 Highland Lane, permitting the expansion of the existing use as a private educational institution.
Second.
Heard a motion as second. The motion's now open for discussion. I'd like to ask our solicitor, John Walco, to provide a little bit more information about the conditions.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, if the board does see fit to approve this conditional use application, I would suggest that there be three conditions that would be added to make that conditional use decision. Subject to those conditions, the first, that the applicant comply with the testimony and exhibits that were presented during the hearing unless otherwise desired to be waived by this board. Second, that the applicant comply with all other laws, rules, regulations that would be subject to them. And third, that any approvals given to this board would also apply to the past extensions of the building that were done in the past, and that it would also apply for any future extensions that they would be proposing for purposes of a school use or accessory school use, so certainly just the uses that would remain approved. Of course, they would still need to go through land development if that would apply, but that would be the third condition, just to ensure the extent of this approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Could you clarify the first condition, Mr. Walco? You referred to testimony. I wasn't sure which testimony it was.
All of the testimony. Generally, a, an applicant during a hearing will be held to the testimony that they are presenting. If they presented something to you through exhibits or testimony and that ended up not being actually what they do, whether it's by mistake, I wouldn't think it would be intentionally. You were, you're not, you're only approving the use based upon what you heard they want to do.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
And that is the standard condition. That's usually in any conditional use order.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
If I could just get clarification, this is not the, the action that we're going to consider several moments from now under resolutions, the SALDO resolution contains more conditions, specifically conditions about sidewalks and other things.
Correct. The future resolution is related to the actual land development. This is just related to the use, and it has remained that school use. There's no change in use. It's just through a little tweak in, in the codes over the changing, how they've been there forever. We thought it best that they apply for that conditional use to get back on track with the use. The actual development is what the subsequent resolution is going to be addressing.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. Mr. Berman, can you please take the roll?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Groth.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We will now move on to agenda item number 12, resolutions. This evening, the board will consider three resolutions, starting with Resolution Number 2460-2025. I'll now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution Number 2460-2025, approving the statewide local share account grant application from the Commonwealth Financing Authority for renovations of the locker rooms for the Haverford YMCA. Second.
Heard a motion as second. The motion's now open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on the board? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman, please take the roll.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Groth.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move on to Resolution Number 2461-2025. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Cavender.
Make a motion to approve the preliminary final land development plan for the St. Coleman John Newman School for a building addition at 380 Highland Lane, Brynmar.
Second.
Heard a motion as second. The motion's now open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on the board regarding this resolution?
Do I understand that the applicant is, accepts all of these conditions with the exception of is challenging the condition about the payment in lieu of a sidewalk from the driveway to the rest of Highland Avenue down to Redner?
That was not my understanding that there's any challenge. There was established a, a payment in lieu of sidewalks for the portion that they otherwise would be required to put in, but they are putting in the sidewalks between the two driveways. I think there was an agreement between the township staff as to where sidewalks should be. I think the Planning Commission was also on board with that.
So the applicant has no objections to the resolution as written by the township?
Robert Lynn, architect for the project, we spent about an hour, I guess, last Monday evening discussing it, and our understanding was that the sidewalks were important to the township between the two driveways, which is about 560 linear feet. Curbs were not important because they didn't affect drainage patterns, they didn't in any way affect the sidewalk because the sidewalk will be removed from the actual paved cartway by a number of feet because of elevation. And we also were willing to accept the condition that we would work with the township on a fee in lieu of the section from the lower driveway down to the corner intersection. And we worked through those details, working with your solicitor and your engineer relative to quantities and costs of those, those improvements.
So as, as written, the applicant is fine with this resolution?
I didn't understand the exact wording as written.
Well, I, I think the resolution itself is a multi-page document, and I think the question was whether or not there was an agreement between the township and the applicant, your client, related to the partial waiver of payment in lieu for that partial waiver of that portion of the sidewalk. My understanding that there was an agreement made that that payment would be made in $22,050 for the sidewalks for that remaining frontage. That was a number that was, I think, discussed between the Director of Planning, based upon numbers given from the engineer, and I think this does get the Planning Commission, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure if explains you were involved in those discussions or not.
I believe it's consistent with the Planning Commission discussions as well. Yes.
And what we do have are 13 waivers being requested. I, did we, no, as of last week, no one was very concerned with any of the waivers, but I believe they are asking for all of those waivers. So any approvals given, I would assume would also be approvals of those waivers unless someone wanted to discuss any of those specifically. But for that sidewalk waiver, again, that's a partial waiver with the condition that they're able to pay that fee in lieu.
And we also accept the, the engineer's letter, last review letter by the engineers being part and parcel of the condition of approval, but we will comply with that letter to his satisfaction.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments?
Yeah, just so I'm, I'm clear for myself, when we completed our work session, I was, it seemed that everyone, meaning the township and the applicant, were in complete agreement. I'm correct in saying that from last Monday till today...
with the condition that they're able to pay that fee in lieu.
And we also accept the, uh, the engineer's letter, last review letter by the engineer as being part and parcel of the condition of approval, but we will comply with that letter, um, to his satisfaction.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments?
Yeah, just so I'm, I'm clear for myself, when we completed our work session, um, I was, it seemed that everyone, meaning the township and the applicant, were in complete agreement. Um, I'm correct in saying that from last Monday till today, there's been no changes, is that correct?
No change.
Okay, that's my understanding as well.
Thank you.
No change by the applicant.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Lynn. Um, we will now move to a vote, Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, thanks. Nobody ever says it to you, but thanks for the time you spent, the engineer spent, the solicitor spent, the Planning Commission spent, the Shade Tree Commission, and the zoning hearing board. Other than that, I have no other thanks. But I mean, people think you just walk up here and do this, they don't recognize it's a long tail of a process to get to this moment, and that time is very much appreciated, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Madam President, based upon the discussion, I think the record should make clear that that approval also does include the granting of those waivers as discussed.
Thank you. Noted. We now move on to Resolution Number 2462-2025. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2462-2025, Approving American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Reassignment of Obligations.
Is there a second? Heard a motion a second, the motion's now open for discussion. Any questions, comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote, Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes, motion carries, thank you. We now move on to Agenda Item Number 13, to extend a purchase agreement with Delaware County Schools Healthcare Trust. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve a two-year purchase agreement extension with Delaware County Schools Healthcare Trust effective January 1st, 2026.
Heard a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's now open for discussion, any questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote, Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes, motion passes, thank you. Now move on to Agenda Item Number 14, Approval of Nomination. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Motion to support the nomination of the Miller-Lidham Dickerson House to the National Register of Historic Places.
Yes.
Heard a motion a second, the motion's now open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on the board?
Madam President, just to, um, this is the, otherwise known as Hartford Hall, which, uh, the house that, um, Anthony Tony Morinelli has lovingly, um, restored and continues to restore the last 10 years, and I wholeheartedly support this, um, nomination.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Further questions or comments?
If I may ask, has he indicated his, um, um, willingness to be designated in the National Register?
Uh, he, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, he initiated the process.
Actively courted this?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Berman, please take the roll.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion passes, thank you. We will now move on to the continuation of the Citizens Forum, providing an opportunities for members of the public who wish to address the board. Kindly ask that you use three minutes for your remarks, write any comments or questions that you have. Again, commissioners will have the opportunity to respond after all citizens have had the chance to speak. And with that, um, I will invite members of the audience who wish to speak to please come to the podium. First row, Mr. Lynn? Good, all right. Second row. Third row. Fourth row. Somebody on that side? On the right-hand side? Would you like to speak?
Major Peterson, U.S. Army, retired, Derwin Drive. This Saturday, we will have a nationwide Democratic Party protest. That's October 18th. We had one on June 14th as well. Now, if you Google, you can find out that these protests, run by the Democratic Party, will be all throughout the United States. So it's not something that's just going to happen in Haverford Township. Now, I really can't speak if other townships are footing the bill for any of the Department of Public Works employees that Haverford Township will be paying for, or for the police to provide security that, uh, Haverford Township will require at that event. It's a political party event, the Democratic Party event, and estimates are upwards of $60,000 worth of taxpayer funds will be spent in order to support this Democratic Party event. Now, I won't call it the No Kings Rally, because in no way, shape, or form will there be any protest of the violation of separation of powers that Governor Tom Wolf conducted during his COVID shutdowns. We remember that. We remember he acted like a king, invoking 90-day emergency clauses in many successive events, until our legislature passed a referendum saying, "You've got to get legislation approval," legislature approval, rather, for every after-your-first-90-day event. Neither will there be any protest, I'm sure, about Mayor Jim Kenny's removal of the Pennsylvania Legislature's approval for the Columbus Day holiday, which was yesterday, or the United States House of Representatives and the Senate are federal legislatures' approval of the Columbus State, uh, Columbus Day holiday. No, once again, we had a Democrat who violated separation of powers, thought he was a king, but I don't think that'll be raised at this Saturday's event. Now, when we talk about the Insurrection Act, many of us might have heard about that, and there's, there's a lot of controversy and concern whether Donald Trump might use the Insurrection Act. Well, 13 other U.S. Presidents have invoked the Insurrection Act. They include Thomas Jefferson, Abraham Lincoln, Ulysses S. Grant, Dwight Eisenhower, John F. Kennedy, Andrew Jackson, Andrew Jackson, or I'm sorry, Andrew Johnson and Andrew Jackson, Rutherford B. Hayes, Grover Cleveland, uh, President Wilson, and FDR, along with the most recent, George H.W. Bush. So 13 U.S. Presidents have invoked the Insurrection Act. And presidents have used the Insurrection Act to enforce federal law and suppress civil unrest, sometimes over the objection of the state governor. Well, should Donald Trump invoke the Insurrection Act for what's going on in our country today, he will join 13 other presidents of the 45 total presidents who've been sworn into office, who've also invoked the Insurrection Act.
Thank you. Any further comments from the audience this evening? Okay. Thank you, Major Peterson, for taking the time to offer your comments. This time, I'd like to open the floor to my colleagues on the board for any responses or remarks regarding the matters raised during Citizens Forum. Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. Any matters that my colleagues would like to bring forward for discussion at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to other business. Um, the other business portion of our meeting is when commissioners make their final remarks for the evening. We'll start with First Ward Commissioner Brian Gondak.
Thank you. A couple of announcements from the, regarding the Westgate Hills Civic Association. Uh, the Civic Association is hosting a golf outing on Saturday, October 25th at 10:00 AM. Uh, if you're interested, I would encourage you to go to their Facebook page, uh, for further information and contact information to participate. Also, on, uh, Sunday, October 26th, uh, the Westgate Hills Civic Association is having their annual Halloween costume contest and potluck at the park. Uh, there'll be, uh, potluck, uh, there'll be grilling up hot dogs, there'll be streaming the Eagles game, there'll be costume contests, uh, and so on, so, you know, please come out. Uh, these are always great fun events to support. Just to get a little bit ahead of it, to put this on people's radars, dreaded leaf season is coming. Um, and it's my understanding that the schedule for the leaf pickups is going to be released, uh, October 20th, and it's, I believe that's what it's listed on the website. Uh, so, uh, as of October 20th, keep an eye out for that schedule for when your pickups will be. Um, beyond that, I just want to say, uh, you know, this, this year, next year, we've been, uh, celebrating a lot of different anniversaries, uh, on a national level. Uh, back in June, uh, we celebrated the Army's 250th birthday. I'd like to recognize that in October, we'll be celebrating the Navy and the Marines' 250th birthday. Uh, so happy birthday to those two, uh, entities and thank them for their, uh, service. Other than that, Halloween is on a Friday this year, uh, which I'm sure most parents are probably pretty excited about, not having to deal with their kids the next morning, waking up for school. Uh, but let's be conscientious of, uh, children being out and about later in the evening that day, uh, and drive around the township safely. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you. I now move on to Second Ward Commissioner Sheri Forstie-Grupp.
Thank you. Um, tomorrow, I am going to be attending the meeting of the Haverford Township Free Library Board, and I will be reading a letter of accommodation for Phil Goldsmith, who was, um, a member of the library board for eight years and was president of the board for six years, and oversaw the, the, the inception and realization of our renovated and expanded library. So I'm very much looking forward to reading this letter of accommodation and giving it to, um, Mr. Goldsmith tomorrow at the library. And a plug, if you haven't been to the library, please make a point of going there because it truly is a palace for us of learning and knowledge and resources that goes far beyond just the books on the shelf. All those librarians are there to help answer your questions, whether they're about business, starting a new business, or knowing how your smartphone works because they're happy to, uh, help you even with something that small, or how to get the Libby app so you can download books and audiobooks to listen at home. The other thing that the library's doing, um, is the Dewey Decimal Dash on November 1st from 8:00 to 9:30 AM. Starting in the parking lot of the library, you can register online. I would also say that the library, for me, is one of those great symbols here in the United States. There's one in, hopefully, every town in the U.S. I remember the first trips, my mother took me to the, uh, Public Library in Hannibal, Missouri. It was called the Mark Twain Library, and it was, um, a magical place. And so I hope everyone has a library that they can go to to explore and learn about themselves and the world because it's part of our rights as protected under the First Amendment, which is what all those protests that people engage in are. There are rights under the First Amendment, and we need to keep those sacred because we all need to listen to each other, especially in this day and age. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Forstie-Grupp. We'll now move on to Fifth Ward Commissioner Laura Cavender.
Thank you. Speaking of the library, I, um, was able to join in a community read-a-thon this weekend. Um, it was seven hours of community members joining in to read passages from Fahrenheit 451 by Ray Bradbury, and it, um, it was published in 1953. If you're not familiar with it, it's about a society that, um, is, burns books, and, and it's really reminds us today why access to books and to open dialogue, and, you know, like Commissioner Forstie-Grupp was saying, freedom of speech, freedom to assemble and express your views, um, these are essential to a healthy community, whether you're talking locally, nationally, um, and I hope that everyone will exercise their rights for that. I found it really uplifting, um, all kinds of people, from Mary Gay Scanlon, our, um, our U.S. Representative, all the way down to, um, one of the teachers at the middle school who I see every year with his sixth graders doing their projects. So it was really a nice community event, and I echo, um, Sheri's, uh, suggestion that you go to the library if you haven't been. Uh, I want to reiterate something I announced early in the meeting. Um, this lecture that we're going to be having with the Executive Director of the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission should be really, um, interesting. Um, Chad Dion Lassiter is a, um, a master of social work. He's a scholar of a nationally recognized leader in the field of race relations. Um, his career has been based on advancing dialogue, understanding solutions around race, peace, and equity. So we're really lucky to have him visiting us here in Haverford Township, and I want to thank, uh, Dave Berman for helping us, helping the Human Relations Commission bring him in. Um, so he'll be speaking about his work as Executive Director. in. So he'll be speaking about his work as Executive Director. Everyone is welcome. Bring your questions. It will be an open dialogue. So that's October 23rd from 6:30 to 8:00 here at the Township Building. There's a trunk-or-treat event that's hosted by the Haverford Township BIPOC parents, partnering with the Haverford Township Police Department. It'll be right here in the Township parking lot this Saturday, the 18th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's free event, candy, games, bring your kids, wear your costumes. It's always a good time. And I like to thank our police department for taking part in that every year. The last thing I want to say is November 4th is Election Day. On odd years, it's municipal, county, or judicial elections. I'll encourage everybody to educate themselves about the candidates. Delaware County has a website that is delcopa.gov/vote, and that's a nonpartisan resource, so you can learn about the candidates that are on the ballot. The ballot drop box at the Government Center Building and media is also open for voters who would like to return their ballot in person, and the ballot, the drop box here at the township will be available starting Monday, October 20th. And everybody, please vote. We'll see you in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavender. Commissioner Larry Holmes.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner and colleagues. My comments aren't light tonight. It was, it's five weeks ago tomorrow that many of us witnessed a very horrible event here in America. We witnessed the murder of Charlie Kirk. And one of the dreadful things about our modern society, and it was so different when we were younger, was that our children see these things. They see these things happen live. One of my children is old enough to have seen the buildings fall in New York City while they happened in real time with all those thousands of people dying within them at that very moment, to have seen Charlie Kirk be murdered. And unfortunately, so many people saw the video that didn't stop at the moment of impact, but after that. And I have struggled terribly after that, as to how to react to that and what to say. People know that I'm not shy about talking about things that have, you know, some national significance. I'm not shy about talking about things that are locally, but I really struggled here, because very quickly after it, it evolved into a terrible battle of hagiography and of people criticizing him, and neither side, certainly neither side respecting the other, and I don't think anybody really respecting the horror of the moment. And I wanted very carefully to think about what I wanted to say and how I would put my thoughts together and try in some way to be useful in having people think about this and think about what to do next. And I was drawn to a historical event. It was almost 60 years ago. It was April 4th, 1968, and it was in Indianapolis. Robert F. Kennedy was running for president, and he was about to speak in a part of Indianapolis, Broadway and, I think, 17th, a heavily African-American part of Indianapolis. And he just, had just found out that Martin Luther King had been assassinated. Now, nobody had phones to look at. Nobody at this crowd who sat there all day waiting for RFK knew anything about it. And Robert Kennedy did not postpone or cancel his rally, but instead went and spoke off the cuff tonight about what happened. And if you will all bear with me, I'm just going to read to you his speech. It wasn't long, but it was extremely meaningful, and I thought it would matter for the America that we are all living in right now. He said, "Ladies and gentlemen, I'm only going to talk to you just for a minute or so this evening, because I have some very sad news for all of you. Could you lower those signs, please? I have some very sad news for all of you, and I think sad news for all of our fellow citizens and people who love peace all over the world, and that is that Martin Luther King was shot and was killed tonight in Memphis, Tennessee. Martin Luther King dedicated his life to love and to justice between fellow human beings. He died in the cause of that effort. In this difficult day, in this difficult time for the United States, it's perhaps well to ask what kind of a nation we are and what direction we want to move in. For those of you who are Black, considering the evidence evidently is that there were white people who were responsible, you could be filled with bitterness and with hatred and a desire for revenge. We can move in that direction as a country in greater polarization, Black people amongst Blacks and white among whites, filled with hatred toward one another, or we can make an effort, as Martin Luther King did, to understand and to comprehend and replace that violence, that stain of bloodshed that has spread across our land, with an effort to understand compassion and love. For those of you who are Black and are tempted to fill with hatred and mistrust of the injustice of such an act against all white people, I would only say that I can only feel in my own heart the same kind of feeling. I had a member of my family killed, but he was killed by a white man. But we have to make an effort in the United States. We have to make an effort to understand, to get beyond, or go beyond these rather difficult times. My favorite poet was Escholus, and he once wrote, "Even in our sleep, pain which cannot forget falls drop by drop upon the heart, until, in our own despair, against our will, comes wisdom through the awful grace of God." What we need in the United States is not division. What we need in the United States is not hatred. What we need in the United States is not violence and lawlessness, but is love and wisdom and compassion toward one another, and a feeling of justice toward those who still suffer within our country, whether they be white or whether they be Black. So I ask you tonight to return home, to say a prayer for the family of Martin Luther King. Yes, it's true, but more importantly, to say a prayer for our own country, which all of us love, a prayer for understanding and that compassion of which I spoke. We can do well in this country. We will have difficult times. We've had difficult times in the past, but we, and we will have difficult times in the future. But it is not the end of violence. It is not the end of lawlessness, and it's not the end of disorder. But the vast majority of white people and the vast majority of Black people in this country want to live together, want to improve the quality of our life, and want justice for all human beings that abide in our land. And let's dedicate ourselves to what the Greeks wrote so many years ago, to tame the savageness of man and make gentle the life of this world. Let us dedicate ourselves to that and say a prayer for our country and for our people. Thank you very much. That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. I now ask Commissioner Connor Quinn to offer his final remarks.
Yes. Thank you. The Greens will be having a haunted house this Saturday night from 7:00 to 10:00. And then the next day, they will also be having a, or a event from 12:00 to 2:00. So dread, so get dressed, dressed up, and go, and go over to the Greens and have fun. So, and last week, I went to the Citizens' Open House, because I am the Chair of that board. So I'm thrilled to go and support them, but it was great to see everybody out to, to see the new, the new, new, the new library and, and all that. And with critical respect, as we have all seen, or I think we need to see more, more, more of that in our world, as was talked about tonight. There, I've seen lots of friends not be friends, friends now because of their views. I think it's important to sit down and discuss things. And you might not, 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 not agree, but I think that to change the world, it starts with us, with everyone, one of us, and that's the only way that we can get, get things done, is to change, change the world. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Hart.
Yeah, just two items. The Penfield Civic Association movie night this past Saturday had to be canceled due to the weather. As of now, no makeup date has been announced. And Brookline Park continues, the development is ongoing. It's really shaping up. We're hopeful that possibly by Thanksgiving, it will be, the first phase will have opened, and kids will be on the, able to use all the new equipment there. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Commissioner McCollum.
Just one quick announcement. This Saturday morning, 10:00, I'm sorry, 11:00 a.m. on October 18th, our Recreation Director, Mr. Brian Barrett, is going to lead a trail walk at J.D. McDonald Field. It's going to begin at the trailhead in the parking lot, continue all the way up the Darby Creek Trail to the bus depot. There will be stopping along the way at a few different, you know, important spots to explain what's going on with the trail, and then it'll return. I believe it's about a three-mile trek up and back, so it'll take about a little over an hour, hour and a half. That's all I have.
I hear there are going to be high fives at the end. Vice President McCluskey, the floor is yours.
Just briefly to point out, we had talked about redistricting and the need to be redistricting, and the result would be that some residents of the Fourth Ward were going to become residents of the Third Ward for purposes of how we configure the wards in voting in Haverford Township. That has not met all the approvals at different levels of government that it has to. So for this election, wherever you voted in the spring, wherever you voted last fall, is where you will vote this year. It only affects a certain, a few people that are currently in the Fourth Ward, but just try to reiterate that, obviously, people, if they go to polling places, they'll be redirected. But wherever you voted last spring, wherever you voted last fall, in the Fourth Ward is where you're going to vote. Just hopefully that message is received. Along the lines of the Third and Fourth Ward collaborating, Commissioner Trombetta and I will hold the annual Third and Fourth Ward Town Hall next week at 7:00 to 8:30 at the Haverford Township Library. We'll be there with members of Township staff and answer any questions. It's usually a fairly casual discussion, just to address some of the shared issues that we have, but also any township issues that anybody wants to raise. Again, that'll be Monday night, 7:00 to 8:30 at the Haverford Township Library. What? Eight?
October 20th.
October 20th. Monday, October 20th. And finally, I lived in Chicago for seven years. It's a place that's very close to my heart for a variety of reasons. Chicago is a beautiful place. It's a world-class town filled with beautiful people. And anybody who has ever stepped foot in that town feels the same way. And anybody disagrees, I suggest you visit.
Thank you, Commissioner McCluskey. I too am looking forward to our Town Hall on October 20th at 7:00 p.m. at the Haverford Township Free Library. You might recall, every October, I pause to reflect. On October 27th, we remember the lives lost in the Tree of Life synagogue shooting that took place in the Squirrel Hill neighborhood in Pittsburgh. For those who don't know, Pittsburgh is where I began my career. I attended grad school there, and I became Chief of Staff to a Pittsburgh City Council member. Squirrel Hill was the very first neighborhood that I called home in Pittsburgh. And as Chief of Staff, I had the privilege of serving the residents of Squirrel Hill. So the connections to the Tree of Life synagogue run deep for me. My former colleague in City Council was the president of one of the congregations that worshiped in the Tree of Life. I knew some of the victims and counted some of them as my friends. My first realtor, Herb Younger, was a regular at our town halls at the Jewish Community Center in Squirrel Hill. And another former colleague in City Council survived that horrific day. That tragedy will always stay with me. It's why, a few years ago, after a school shooting took place, I wrote about the Tree of Life and raised my concerns about gun violence in my newsletter. It's why I was proud to work with this board to pass a resolution urging the state to strengthen hate crime laws. And in both instances, I was told by a constituent, "Stay in your lane. That's not what your Board of Commissioners should be doing." But my answer remains the same. And I don't raise this to create fear. I raise it to remind us that no community is immune. Gun violence and hate may not feel like local issues until suddenly they are. In Pittsburgh, in a neighborhood that was vibrant, walkable, diverse, a place that I never thought it could happen, it did. And today, I raise it again, because I see the warning signs all around us, the rise in hateful rhetoric, the easy division of us versus them, the cruelty that too often fills our social media and our politics. We can and we must choose differently, no matter the faith we practice, the people we love, the challenges we face in recovery or with mental health, or even how we view the role of government. Every person deserves dignity, respect, and kindness. Every person deserves the safety to live peacefully in their community and the freedom to worship where and how they choose. And it's why I'm proud, like Commissioner Quinn mentioned, to serve on this board. We don't always agree, but we work together for the common good, to make Haverford Township safe, welcoming, and a healthy community for all. Comes back to Haverford Township Day, true day of unity. And we'll see it again at Discover Haverford's Holiday Festival in December, at Love Local Night, at Senior Nights Out. There are moments that remind us of who we are when we come together, neighbors who celebrate, support, and lift one another up. So tonight, I want to thank you, our residents, for being part of that work. I want to thank our Township staff, our police department, the many volunteers for making Haverford Township Day possible. If we can commit together to building a community where kindness is stronger than hate, where respect is louder than division, and where unity always prevails, together, I think we can and we will make a difference. With that said, are there any final comments from my colleagues on this board?
During none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.